I want to call the March 12, 2012, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. If you would stand with me, please. Commissioner Sandlin will lead our prayer and Commissioner Windrow will lead us in our pledge.
Let us pray. Definitely, Father, we are so thankful for the many blessings you have given us, watching over us from day to day and keeping us safe and healthy. And, Father, we thank you for this fine country. Thank you for being with our military, Father, and we thank you for being with Rutherford County and all the things that we do here as county commissioners and planning commission. Be with us tonight as we make the right decisions for the county and our future and always, Father, forgive us of our many sins. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Hold the roll gail, please.
Rhonda Allen, Richie Boland, Veronica Buchanan, Will Jordan, Mike Kush, Craig Lynch, Pettis Reed, Steve Sandlin, Mike Vaught, Vincent Windrow, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
First item on our agenda, well, do we have anything withdrawn? We okay?
We're fine, sir.
First item on our agenda is a rezoning request and a public hearing. Johnny Spees, the item number is 12A1, I'm sorry, 001, rezoning and a conditional use permit. Floration Road, Commissioner is Robert P., and the site is approximately one acre.
Thank you Chairman Phillips. The application this evening is located on the corner of Florington Road and John Bragg Highway and it's approximately an acre in size and is currently zoned R-15. If you look at the comprehensive plan, it shows this area as being part of the suburban character area, but it's also along an urban corridor which does allow this type of use to take place, so it would be within the recommended uses for an urban corridor. You should have a concept plan in front of you, but also projected on the screen. The applicant is proposing to build a warehouse for ProLift Systems, which is a locally owned foundation and structural repair company. The property would be used for parking vehicles and also storing equipment, so employees would show up in the morning, pick up supplies, go to the job site, show back up in the evening to drop things off. No customers would ever be present on the site, so it really will function as a warehouse. You can see the warehouse is approximately 2,000 square feet in size. There is an electric easement that goes through the property, however, the applicant has gotten permission to encroach upon that easement for 10 feet, but it does kind of constrain where the building can be placed. The property is actually constrained already because in 1990, two-thirds of the property was acquired as right-of-way for the John Bragg Highway, so there are no septic soils left on the remnant of this property. Because of that, there will be no running water in the warehouse and the bathroom facilities will be provided by a chemical toilet, which we've talked with the State Department that does not violate any state laws, so we'll just have to make sure when we review the site plan that we find a good location for the toilet that can be well screened but easy to maintain as well. So, the applicant is also maintaining to continue to have the existing access onto Florington Road. He's not going to change that. He is proposing to pave the parking area and have curbs, also proposing to install a six-foot privacy fence as part of the screening requirement. So, just give you a quick tour of the property. This is looking into the site. You can see John Bragg there on the right. And, of course, there's the entrance to the property. And that's just a different angle on the property. The applicant is present and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Floor is open for discussion. Any calls?
No, no phone calls were received for this application.
Elizabeth, is that a porta potty?
Yes. It'll be a portage on. That's why I said that we'll need to find a location on the site where it can be well screened but still easy to access for maintenance.
If not, we'll open our public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this proposal can come forward. Is the applicant here? Could you come forward, please? Could you state your name and address and tell us a little bit about what you want to do?
My name is Johnny Spees.
Speak in that mic if you will.
My name is Johnny Spees. I live at 1920 Night Walk Court in Murfreesboro, just in Garrison Cove. And basically what I've done here for the last 16 years is I've had a foundation repair business where we actually come in, drive pilings in the ground and stabilize houses and basically fix water problems. And we've started to get more business, doing more advertising to where I've been trying to find a location that's been close enough to my home that we could actually have a business. And in this lot, we found it and can afford it. And we just need a place to come in the mornings, pick up our trucks, go to the job sites, and then in the afternoon, drop our trucks off. But we don't need a sign there at all because we're not trying to promote our business there. We pay for advertising to get our business and we just need a location to operate out of. And this, for me, living in Garrison Cove, I think it's like a four-minute drive, so for us, it's optimum for us.
Have you talked to the neighbors around this property to see if, you know, if there's any, you know, adverse adversity to it or anything?
Yeah, I've talked to two. One of them, actually, is the person who signed off for the electrical. His sister lives across the street and his dad lives on the corner and he was more than willing and that's, he was the one that actually signed that easement for us. And then Mike O'Donnell, who's the real estate agent, he's actually talked to one neighbor and then that leaves only one person that we haven't contacted.
I just noticed in the pictures, there was a brick house. Looked like it was fairly close right there.
That's the one that the electrical gentleman, his sister owns.
They're aware of what's going on.
Yes, he's actually the one who signed off. And that house is presently, they've been trying to sell it for, I guess, a year, for sale by owner, and then it stretches all the way down to the corner of Floration, which is, I think, that lot and the house is three acres, the one across the street, goes all the way to the very end and which... I was thinking about buying that house and then he was going to buy the other two acres, but it's all Cinco's at that end, so it's a no-go for that end, so this was the only lot available.
Couple of questions. Is the electrical that runs close to the corner of the building, is it underground or overhead?
Overhead.
Okay. And this plan shows a privacy fence, looks like it's completely around the perimeter of the property?
Yes, sir.
Is that an existing fence or is that a proposed fence?
No, that's one I want to put up.
And what kind of fence?
All wood and structure all the way around it. And I don't want it to be chain-linked. I just, I know it needs to look nice. I want a brick, the whole front of the building that will face John Bragg, even though we'll have two garage doors. I want it to look as nice as my house does in Garrison Cove because it's going to be my business. The driveway you see running all the way up?
Right.
I'm going to do concrete all the way, concrete parking lot. I mean, I want it to look nice out because I don't want to show up to a place of business and we're doing all this and then have it look bad.
Elizabeth, I have a question, or for Doug, either one. Is he also subject to landscaping requirements or is this slot size that...
Yes. He will have to do a Type 2 buffer. The fence will be credited towards that with reduced width and reduced amount of landscaping material, but he'll have to show that on the site plan.
You're aware of all that?
And I actually told Elizabeth before I even knew about that, I was going to do that anyways.
Right.
So, I mean, I just want it to look, I mean, if I have to put, you tell me a certain amount of trees and then I'd like to put more, I just want it to look nice all around there.
We do appreciate that. I have one technical question for the staff. Is it okay for that corner of that building to protrude into the electric easement although...
That's entirely up to the electrical company.
Okay.
He signed off on that.
Oh, he did?
Yes, sir. I took the paperwork to him because I was wanting to try to build a 30-by-80 shop, which you can't put that there, and it was only going to be like a 1,500 square foot. I took it over to the electric department, the head engineer, I don't know if he's the head engineer, but he's the engineer, and he looked at it and says that, "Look, I need 10-foot to be able to get my trucks underneath to work on that power line." And then so that, he gave us that easement.
All right, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Spees. Thank you. I'm sorry, Veronica?
He can answer this. How close is the closest fire hydrant? Since this property ain't going to have...
It's within a thousand...
They're close.
It's at that church.
The one near the church is actually slightly further away than the one across the road from John Bragg, so it's got two fire hydrants really close proximity to it.
On the side of the building you've got a lean-to, what's that going to look like?
It's going to be the same look as the building. I think we're going to do a light brown and all we're going to do with that is park our skid loader underneath it to where it's not getting weathered all the time.
What's the structure going to be? Is it going to be wood, vinyl?
A wood frame building, which I just didn't want a pole barn because to me, that's just a pole barn. So, it's actually going to be framed, 10-foot tall walls, two-by-four with R-13 insulation all around it, and then trusses that are four, going to be four-foot tall in the centers with a 412 pitch. So, it's all stick-framed with a brick front and then metal sides and then, of course, a metal roof. And then the lean-to is going to be the same metal that the building is. But there won't be a bunch of poles. We do structure, so it'll be, it'll just be an eye beam through there that you won't see with the rafter sitting on top of it. And if we were able to get more room, that'd have been more of our building, so it took some of our space that we needed for a building and the electric guy says, "Well, we allow a lean-to if you want to put a lean-to," and we never even thought about the lean-to. So, then it works for us because then we're able to keep that skid loader out of the weather instead of keeping it in the shop.
Thank you, Spees. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for or against this proposal? Anyone else? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert P. is the county commissioner out there and he called right before I walked into the building and he is, he's at work, couldn't make it, so he wanted to give a buzz and tell the committee that he is all for this proposal, has no problems with it whatsoever. So, with that and with everything else that's been said and asked, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that the staff has set forth.
I have a motion and a second. My mic. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is staff reports. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is the portion of the meeting where we'll discuss, we'll just continue our work session on the draft zoning document. You know, we've been discussing this over the last several months and at the last meeting, well, at the last night meeting, there were a number of issues that were brought up for discussion and we're going to report on those tonight and have some more discussion. Before we do that, our attorney tonight, Jeremy Cothorn, is going to update, I believe, Vice Chairman Lynch, you had a couple of questions regarding the public hearings and I don't remember if it was you or somebody else, but there was also some questions regarding, you know, zoning out uses and those kind of things. We've discussed that with our legal staff and Mr. Cothorn's going to give us just a brief report on that, so I'll turn it over to Chairman at this point.
Questions, as I understood them from the February 27, 2012 meeting, were, the first issue was whether the county commission can have a public hearing for the new zoning ordinance on one date but vote on the ordinance on a separate date. And then a secondary issue with that is whether this, whether there would need to be a second public hearing before the vote at any second meeting. The second question is if the county commission rejects the proposed plan and sends it back to the planning commission for reconsideration or changes, is there a requirement for another public hearing before passage of the then-bonified ordinance? And then the third question has to do with the zoning out of uses, which kind of asks a couple of different things and I'll kind of briefly touch on that at the end. The first question, again, this is the one with kind of what happens with the public hearing when we send this up to the county commission? Honestly, the statute's not very well drafted, it's not drafted very well. So, the question precisely of whether or not we can have a public hearing at, say, May and then vote on it in June, that's not precisely addressed by the statute at this time. The reality is, what it does say is that we have to have a public hearing on the precise zoning ordinance that's at issue. So, in this situation, it's our position that, given the gravity of the situation, that more public input and more public hearing is probably the better course of action. And that's not really outlined in the statute, but due to the silence of the issue and the fact that there is a public hearing requirement, we really need to be careful about how much public input we're getting. The second issue has to do with what happens if the county commission, for whatever reason, wants to make any changes to the proposed plan? What, and what happens is, is there another requirement for another public hearing? From our reading of the statute, if it goes up to the county commission and the county commission suggests any changes and it gets sent back, it's then incumbent upon the planning commission to have, address the issues and have a report within 30 days. Our understanding of the statute is that that's going to trigger another public hearing, so we're going to have to do the 30-day notice before the public hearing, et cetera, before it's voted on at the county commission level. Yes, sir?
Would that public hearing be limited to what the county commission asked us to address?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It'd be, if the county commission said, "We want you to address issue A, B, and C," then would that public hearing be limited to that or would the whole rezoning ordinance?
I think it would be the whole zoning ordinance, again. It's going to be kind of in your discretion as the planning commission exactly how you guys address any suggested changes from the county commission. And so, there's a lot of moving parts that go into that, but I do believe that the public hearing would be wide open in nature. So, I guess that kind of brings us to a close on question two. So, in summary, if it gets sent back to y'all, we have to do the 30-day notice for the public hearing again. So, then the third question is about this zoning out issue, and there's kind of a couple of different things that kind of get combined into one. The first is this grandfathering issue. That's not really, if you change the zoning and there's an existing lawful use, that's when a grandfathered use comes into being. So, we have several, we have many uses across the county that are grandfathered in. The second issue is this idea that whether or not we can outlaw, outlaw through the parameters, an otherwise lawful use. What, kind of, for example, is if we had an adult entertainment establishment, that's what primarily a lot of the cases focus on. If that's a lawful use under the zoning ordinance, but we make the parameters so restrictive that there's no place within the county that that could actually be a lawful use, that is an issue. That can potentially be a problem. So, if we say, you know, use Y can happen in the county, but only if it's 5,000 feet away from the nearest public road and 6,000 feet away from the nearest school and 10,000 feet from the nearest church, if there's not a spot in the county, that's asking for issues. So, I think those are kind of the three issues and I'm happy to field any questions to further flesh that out if necessary.
Jeremy, have you looked at the ordinance to evaluate it for that very thing to see if we've done that yet?
That is not something that we have done at this point. It's, in all candor, it's going to be very difficult for our office to have any idea of how, the distance between things, et cetera, because that's not information that we have readily available. We can certainly work with planning, the planning department on any precise issues, but we have not done a line-by-line study as far as I'm aware.
Doug, I'm assuming there are only a handful of things that might be overly restrictive like that, like adult entertainment's a great example to use. So, will you take those issues that you know we have the most parameters on and you go through that exercise and make sure that there's at least a spot or multiple spots for those to break lawfully?
Well, I mean, we don't, I mean, I'll say this, we don't have a map in our office or anything like that that just says possible locations for use A, possible locations for use B. We just don't have anything like that. Now, of course, property can always be requested to be rezoned. You know, as part of the ordinance rewrite, I mean, we were sensitive to those kind of issues. You know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about quarries, you know, as being one of the, kind of, one of the ones we've had the most discussion on. And, you know, we've tried to be aware of those issues when we did that, so, you know, that was part of the reason why you saw some of the distance requirements come out of the draft that you did was just for that reason. But again, you know, we're not probably, I mean, we're probably not going to produce a map that just says these are the exact locations for all of these different types of uses. Again, property can be rezoned and, you know, that would be out of date kind of fast, I would think, but that's, I mean, just to answer your question, I guess in a roundabout way, you know, we were cognizant of those kind of things when we were going through this rewrite, so. If there's no other questions, Mr. Chairman, I guess we can go on and discuss some of the other issues that were brought up at the meeting. The first thing, I mean, since we're on, kind of, on the topic, I guess the first issue that we'll discuss and that'll be on this sheet here, this is really an overview of the comments we received after February 16th and after. A lot of them dealt with issues regarding quarries and the language we placed in there. You'll notice that the, the biggest change that we made, of course, came out of the last meeting that we had, the last work session we had regarding the distance requirements, you know, no excavation quarry wall, everything. Basically, we were recommending, originally, I think we were recommending 200 or, was it 300 feet? 300 feet and 100 feet for structures. Of course, we bumped that up to 500 and then 200 feet for structures. After much discussion, it was decided, or the planning commission instructed us, "Just go back to our current code, the 1500." So, you'll notice that we have done that. If you look on the back of the first page, the third point, you'll notice that the language has been changed. We didn't just take the exact wording out of the way it was out of the old, we kind of adopted what was already or adapted it to what was already in the new draft. We just thought it made more sense from just the way it was worded in the new ordinance. Now, along with that discussion regarding the distance requirements, you'll recall that there was a lot of discussion regarding how we were zoning the rock quarries originally. The quarries, of course, and I'll just show us with the planning commission again, when we were looking at the uses in the zoning ordinance and we were looking at them based on what's existing and then trying to figure out how they would fit under the new zoning map, what we tried to do was take the most restrictive zone that the use would be allowed in and then place the use in that zone. So, that was the big reason why you saw the rock quarries that we identified in Rutherford County all received the heavy industrial zoning. Of course, as you recall, there were quite a few concerns and comments on that. So, we've backed off of that and said, "Okay, let's just zone them for residential use," you know, "all four that we identified in Rutherford County." There, on your table, there should be a letter from a gentleman by the name of Tom White with the law firm of Toone, Entrecan and White, and hopefully I'm pronouncing those, the second name especially correctly. This is in regards to the Hoover Quarry that's located off of Twin Oak Drive. Of course, again, as part of this, this whole process, again, looking at the different uses, two of the quarries, and that one being the one on Burnt Knob, was zoned residential. There's a small section there, that's a very small portion that was zoned for industrial use, but the vast majority that was zoned for residential use. There's one towards Smyrna that's also zoned for residential use. The county's rock quarry on 231 Shelbyville Highway was actually zoned for commercial use. And then this last quarry was zoned for, it was industrially zoned primarily. There's actually, it's, the zoning map shows it both zoned industrial and also a portion of it, I'd say, it's difficult to say, maybe a little more than a tenth, I'd say maybe a fifth or a sixth of it's zoned residential, just roughly. Of course, their concern is that if, you know, that they would just like their zoning to be, remain as industrial and that that's their, that's the basic premise behind the letter that's before you. I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe you received a copy of that, at least you were copied on that, and we wanted to go ahead and get that to you, planning commission, just to kind of get your guidance and thoughts on that. The last time when we discussed the zoning of the rock quarries, it was our understanding that you pretty much wanted them all zoned residential. Now, I guess the question we have is, we just want a little clarification, was it, you wanted them all zoned residential regardless of what they're zoned today or if they were already zoned for industrial use, were you wanting to keep those and zone industrial and then leave everything else residential? Really, it just affects the two quarries, this one that we're talking about on Twin Oak and then the county's rock quarry on Shelbyville Pike, which, as far as we're concerned, can be zoned residential. I don't think that's really going to affect anything. But, just so you know, the use, regardless of what it's zoned, will be a grandfathered use. Even under the heavy industrial zone, this is not a permitted use by rights, permitted by special exception. So, regardless of what we do, it will be a grandfathered situation. But, in light of this letter, I thought it only fair to bring this to your attention and ask your guidance on this particular topic, so I'll be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Any ordinance I've ever been a part of, whether it be the city of Murfreesboro, when I worked there for 10 years, or with the county, for 21 years now, existing businesses or zones are grandfathered in. They're grandfathered until something changes. So, I mean, this letter here, is that misunderstanding that they're grandfathered in, some other issues or questions that people have put into this text of us working on this at this point in time, not in understanding that they're grandfathered in to what the zoning is now? And they can continue, they would just be, I don't know if I'd say an illegal nonconforming or just be a nonconforming use that they are still operating under until something happens, they change hands or whatever, then that's when they have to come in compliance.
Well, I think they recognize in this letter, best, at least from my reading of it, that they understand that they will be considered nonconforming uses and that transcends ownership. I mean, they could go ahead and sell the property, you know, once a month for the next 10 years as long as the use continued, they would still be grandfathered. It's not the sale of the property that really triggers that, it's really the discontinuance of the use of the property. If it stopped being a rock quarry according to state law for 30 consecutive months, then that protection is gone. Now, that being said, and they make mention of this in the letter, there are a number of bills before the legislature this year that may change the nature of the nonconforming use statute, but, and Mr. Terry, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the statutes that I'm aware of, if anything, increase the protections of nonconforming uses, not necessarily limiting them. Am I correct in that assessment?
There are, I think, four bills before the legislature that affect nonconforming uses as, amending section 13-7-208 in the Tennessee Code, and it will have impact on what you may or may not do. If it passes, it may not pass, but it would. In one case, one of the bills will, or would, include onsite signs in a protected class as a nonconforming use. And, of course, the effect of that is that as long as those signs are in use, they're protected, you can't make them tear them down, they can't go out of business, they can change them, do anything you want to with them. The most significant is another bill that's very similar to that bill, dealing with signs. The major bill is a complete rewrite of that section of the code. And that rewrite would not only cover commercial and industrial uses as nonconforming uses, which is the same thing we say when we mean grandfathering in, it would include all uses. Single-family dwellings, any kind of community facility activity, group assembly, whatever. Any use of land is grandfathered under that new section if it were to pass. That also, that bill also does away with a 30-month period. And so, if a use goes out of business, whether it's a rock quarry or a gas station or whatever, that's a nonconforming use, they can reestablish it at any time and it can stay out of business for 30 months or 36 months or four years or whatever. So, it significantly weakens what you can do through... So it significantly weakens what you can do through zoning at county level.
Chairman, I, I'd like to voice my opinion. While I don't think, I don't feel comfortable taking any business that's nonconforming in a residential zone and all of a sudden making them such as the quarries that aren't, that aren't, that are grandfathered in and making those industrial, I don't believe we're all taking industrial zone away from a company that's done their homework, that's done the right thing, got the property correctly zoned, and they may not use all that land out there for a quarry. I mean, I'm, I'm guessing that out there at Hoover's Quarry has been zoned industrial for decades, more than likely, and they may have some land they're not going to quarry, they're ever going to do some industrial use with, and I'm okay with that because they bought industrially zoned property. To take it away from them, I've got a bit of a problem with. You know, I don't want to give an industrial zone to somebody that doesn't have it, but on the same hand, don't want to take it away from somebody that does have it, because I just think that's a, they're, they're, they've paid taxes on it, they've bought the property, they've done their homework, they've done the, they've got it zoned appropriately, they're not a nonconforming use, they are a conforming use at this time, I, I take it.
Well, again, most of the, they're, according to our zoning map, portions of it are zoned residential, but there's a good chunk that is zoned industrial.
The chunk that's industrial, I'm not going to vote personally to take it away from. You know, I would like to just leave it where it is, on, on all the quarries. I mean, if the other quarries is zoned residential, that's great, they're not, that way those neighborhoods are secure, they won't get something brought on them they don't want, but the, the people that live near the quarry that's zoned industrial, they came in there after it was zoned industrial, it's been in zoned industrial all these years, I'd like to leave it like it is, you know, in the same, whatever parts industrial, leave it, whatever parts residential, leave it, just, in my opinion, leave the status quo and let them keep doing what they could, what they could do today, they'll all be able to do when we're through doing this within reason, in my opinion.
I failed to mention one of the bills, there were four, and this, the next bill deals specifically with rock quarries. It, it doesn't use the word rock quarry, but it, it deals with that issue, it's called land with diminishing assets, or something like that. And that bill, this is, again, it's under the grandfathering clause, if, if the rock quarry is a nonconforming use, it's grandfathered in, and there is a contiguous piece of property that was under common ownership at the time the zoning change occurred, which made the quarry nonconforming, then they can expand to that additional piece of property. And all of these are subject to amendment.
Yes, that, that understanding at this point, Mr. Terry, none of these bills have actually been approved, they're just moving through the process at this point, is that correct? Yes, okay. Well, again, we're just wanting to know your thoughts on this. I mean, if that's the way you'd like us to proceed, then that's what we'll do, but we wanted to bring this to your attention, that we did receive this letter in the mail.
Well, we can't base our stuff on what's at the Senate right now for them to dissect and slice up and dice up, and who knows what's going to come out after all this. I mean, we have to be aware of it, I understand that, and surely to goodness, hopefully something like that ain't going to pass, but stranger things have happened. We've got to take what's, what's on our table and discuss it and work through that.
Right, and, and now, you're, you're absolutely right. I, I just, since the, since the letter mentioned pending legislation, I just thought you might be interested to know what that is, but you're, you're absolutely right, we can't, we have to go on as business as usual until we're, until the changes become definite, and, and then at that point, then we would know what we were dealing with, but at this point, yeah, I agree, it's business as usual for us.
Want to echo Will's comments, I, I think he's exactly on point with this, you know, these businesses have been operating successfully, they followed the rules, you know, they bought appropriately, they're appropriately zoned, and I don't see any reason to take that away
If there's no other questions on the, the rock quarries, just in general, or the, the way we've amended, we're proposing to amend these sections that we've discussed, I guess we can go ahead and move on to the, the next topic. Okay. Of course, if there are questions, obviously feel free to ask staff, we'll be more than happy to discuss those. The next item that I'd like to discuss in a little more detail is dealing with our plan development regulations. You'll recall that there's been quite a bit of discussion on our proposed plan unit development regs. Of course, those regulations really came straight from our existing zoning document. You know, we've, we've said it before, and we'll, we'll reiterate it tonight, that the, the standards that we amended a few years ago are pretty much untested at this point. Really, after we made the changes to the plan development zones, that's when the economy really started taking its downturn, so we really haven't had a chance to put any of those standards into practice. But as part of the zoning comments that we received, a lot of the comments dealt with the twenty percent open space requirement that we are proposing and do, already have in our regulations, and there's been quite a few concerns about that. At the last meeting that we had discussing this particular option, you know, it was, it was asked of us if we could come up with perhaps a list of options, maybe different ways to look at the open space, and what we've done, we passed this out at the last day meeting, and I, I've put it on your tables tonight regarding the language for open space. Essentially, we came up with our recommended option, which would be keep the existing language as is, but we also came up with a few other options, which I'll, I'll just briefly go over. Option one would be keep the twenty percent open space requirement, but eliminate the requirement for usable open space, so you could have any combination of the two, it could all just be open space, you know, concert, conserve, preserve, whatever, and then maybe a small amount of what we would call usable open space playgrounds, little mini parks, those kind of things. We would basically amend section nine oh two K one, which is the section really we're talking about, in all residential PUDs, a minimum of twenty percent of the gross project area, excluding those areas devoted to wastewater disposal such as step systems, that's a change we did make, based on a lot of the comments we heard, it's not like that in today's regulations, but we did take, we did take that change and put it in there. Or nonresidential uses shall be set aside as either open space or usable open space or any combination of the two. We'd still leave the definitions in there as to each one, of what each one was, so that, that is one option, and all plan developments that are completely nonresidential would be exempt from that requirement. And again, that's how it's, it's worded in the draft right now. Option two would be to reduce the open space requirement from twenty percent to ten percent. All of the regulations regarding open space would remain the same, including the ratio for the usable open space to open space. So the following amendment would just be, in all residential PUDs, a minimum of ten percent of the gross project area, again, excluding the wastewater areas, nonresidential uses shall be set aside as open space, and at least fifty percent of that would be usable open space. So instead of a twenty and ten percent, you'd be looking at ten and five. Option three would be to eliminate any minimum open space requirements and evaluate each plan development on its own merits. Everything else would remain the same, we would still keep the definitions in there, but we would just say, in all residential PUDs, open space shall be provided using a criteria found in this chapter, all open space and usable open space should be appropriate for the proposed development. That would make it more incumbent on, on staff as reviewing those applications, and also to the planning commission as they were making their review. Option four, and this was a, a comment that came up, was develop some sort of a sliding scale based on either the number of lots or the acreage of the development. We did some research into this particular possibility, and quite frankly, we weren't able to find any plan development regulations that already incorporated this. And when we looked, and I'm not saying that there's one obscure one out there that's not on the internet that maybe we didn't find, but the research that we did, the closest thing I could find was in a subdivision regulation that it was for straight zoning, if you had it zoned this, you had to provide this much open space, and that provided, that was for all developments, not just planned development, so it was a little bit different. We're also concerned as staff that such a system could become cumbersome, could become difficult to enforce, and even, to even come up with, so we don't recommend that that option be implemented, but our, our recommended option would be to leave it as is, or if you're more comfortable with one of the other three options, then, you know, we were more than willing to, to discuss those, but I wanted to make that report to you and to kind of get your take on that and see what kind of guidance you'd like to give staff on that item. Does anyone have a recommendation?
I'm okay personally leaving it as is, I mean, it's, isn't mandatory, a PUD is just another tool in the toolbox, more or less, you can still develop conventionally, you know, and, and if we don't get some sort of green space or whatever, then what's the point in doing it, in my opinion? I mean, it's a, we haven't even tried this baby out, more or less, like a new car, you hadn't even driven yet, you know, we went to a lot of work to draw up these plans, and I, personally, I'd like to see how it does, we can always amend it in five years if, once the economy turns around and we see something we don't like, but I think it's a good option. I think when things change, turn around, the economy changes, people will be doing this, and, and, and I like what we've done, what we've already got written myself.
Doug, let me just ask you one follow-up, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly on this, the language for PUD was in our subdivision regulations, is that correct?
No, the existing PUD regulations is in our zoning.
But it does have to go through zoning, that's what I was trying to remember, was if you can make the modification just at the planning level, or if it has to be approved by the full commission, and it does.
It would have to be approved at the county commission level, if it is.
Doug, what's the normal gain in number of lots, number of housing units, if you took a hundred acres, and, you know, how's this twenty percent ratio work out? Are they gaining more than twenty percent in units?
Well, I'll, I'll have it depends on the development. There's, there's no maximum density requirement or anything like that, saying that if you go with a plan development, you can only ask for X amount of units or X amount of density. So, you know, a lot of the times, what they're gaining in their density, the remaining land that's being left open, they can convert to open space. So, you know, I, I just, I just can't give you an, an exact number as far as if you have a hundred acres, you'll be able to get X amount of, of units on it at this point, you know, a lot of factors go into that, the type of soils that you have and everything, if they have access to sewer, of course, you know, that, that changes things quite a bit. You know, a traditional development at an R-15, you know, you're looking at two point nine units an acre, of course, you'll never really get that kind of density out of that, that's, that's pretty much straight, but you're probably looking at around one and a half to two possibly, you know, at a traditional development, but again, a lot goes into that as well, it's, it's difficult to say that all development's going to get this many units per acre, you just, the conditions on the, on the property really dictate that.
Yes, what I'm asking, is the twenty percent number a good number?
We feel that it is. When we first brought this to the commission's attention, that was the number that was, that was used, that's currently what's in our regulations. Quite frankly, when we were doing the research for this, the numbers were all over the map. We saw some, I mean, quite frankly, there were some that were like thirty, thirty-five percent open space, there were some that were less than twenty percent, there were some that didn't require a, a definite number, it just said you had to supply open space, and they left it up to the, on a case-by-case basis with the developments. So there wasn't just a standard number we saw in the research, so we settled on twenty percent as kind of a middle-of-the-road approach.
I know what I was asking, where that number came from, too.
All right, well, it, it sounds like the consensus on this is to keep the recommended language as, as we've, as we've recommended, keep that language, existing language in place. So the other item that we wanted to bring up, and there's not a handout for that necessarily, but it had to do with cell towers, you recall at the last meeting, we had a, the, some cell tower folks had, had drafted a letter to us and provided us some information, some changes to make. We've made the changes that they've suggested after looking at what they proposed to us. We're still working through some of the issues dealing with co-locations. I feel pretty confident we'll have something, we already have a, a good draft down as to how we're going to handle those co-locations. There's been some legislation nationally that was passed within the last month that kind of changes up things just a little bit, and we'll have to kind of amend to that, just really dealing with the co-locations and, and modifications to existing structures. So I, I feel pretty confident that we can work through that and have that ready for the, the public hearing, if we're, if we're still wanting to have the public hearing in April, we'll, we'll have that done by then. We're pretty close right now, and then thankfully, the, the, the people we've been discussing this with have, you know, provided input to us, so we've been able to help work through that. So again, nothing to hand out on that, but just to give you an update on that particular item. I do believe that was the, the extent of the comments that we received at our last meeting. As you see, we have our consultant team with us here today, Mr. Bill Terry, Mr. David Halfley, and Ms. Michelle Kendall. I know there's been some comments that have been made in the past regarding how we came up with the zoning lines and everything, I know some of the planning commissioners have, have had some concerns about that as well, and essentially, like I said, what we did, especially for the residential areas between the three units an acre versus the one unit an acre area, what we did was we used the future land use map that was formed in the comprehensive plan as, as kind of the guide for that, you know, the, the, the lines in the comprehensive plan, of course, not meant to be parcel-specific in zoning, they have to be, so, you know, you're probably not going to be exact in that regard, but we, we tried to keep it as, as close as we could, and we know that there's been some, some concerns about that, about how those, those areas were determined as far as what was one unit an acre and what was three units an acre. So we've asked Mr. Halfley and Ms. Kendall to, to be here tonight to, just to kind of give an overview of that, and at this point, if I could turn this over to, to Mr. Halfley just for a few moments, just to kind of briefly describe the process and, and how that went, that'd be good. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, Planning Commission members, I'm David Halfley with Parsons Springerhoff, and with me is Michelle Kendall. Michelle is the manager of our Nashville office, and Bill Terry, of course, who has been working with you on the zoning ordinance for the last year or so. We were the team that was working with your steering committee in preparing the comprehensive plan, and we're ready to answer any questions or comments you might have tonight about the preparation of the comprehensive plan. As many of you are aware, Rutherford County, with their steering committee, went through a very careful and detailed process in preparing the plan. The county conducted over ten different steering committee meetings in preparing and receiving public input. Small group meetings were held throughout Rutherford County to gain and solicit community input in terms of preparing the plan, and we also held interviews with approximately twenty individuals and groups throughout the county in seeking public input and preparing the plan. The plan recommends future land uses on a countywide base, on a countywide basis, according to the land use scenario that was recommended as the preferred plan. The plan, as Mr. Demossi said, is a guidance or framework document, the zoning ordinance is the tool that you will use to implement the guidance in the comprehensive plan. The staff has prepared the zoning ordinance to be quite careful in terms of following the spirit and the purpose of the comprehensive plan. By definition, the, the zoning ordinance and the plan will have some minor differences, but as you can see on the draft zoning map that you have been reviewing for these last several months, there is a great deal of consistency between the comprehensive plan that was adopted by the planning commission in April of two thousand and eleven and the draft zoning ordinance that you're reviewing at this time. They are working together and should be considered as a, two companion tools to use in guiding and managing development within Rutherford County. If you have any specific questions regarding the prep, the preparation of the plan, or any other guidance or comments that went into it, any member of our team would be happy to address and answer those tonight.
Questions? Now's a good time.
Mr. Chairman, the, the biggest question I have, and it's concerning our, our map, I guess it's what we have out here, the question is, how did we come about the differences between the two different areas, there, the, the less residential area compared to the other? And that's one of the bigger questions, I think, is what the majority of your people want to know. It's just why, say, in an instance up there where there is, I guess you call it dog leg down into the deeper part there, it, it's the light yellow where the other is the darker yellow. Come out here, and then right here in the other areas out here around Highway ninety-nine and that area, you'll see other light yellows go up, dark yellows come down, and, and that's what we have to explain right there, you know, why is my, why is my property over here and my neighbors over here is this other way?
That's a very common and a very good question in developing a zoning map from a comprehensive plan. The planning, the plan development process considered a wide variety of factors in developing the preferred The planning, the plan development process considered a wide variety of factors in developing the preferred land use plan. There were both natural or nature-based factors such as soils, land suitability and related criteria like that. Also, a number of factors and criteria related to current land uses, transportation, availability of water, availability of sanitary sewer and similar criteria. At some point, when you're developing a, a map, lines have to be drawn somewhere. And what the steering committee did was they looked at the man-made factors as carefully as they could and they looked at the natural features as carefully as they could. And based upon that information, they recommended either higher or lower densities based upon the, the innate suitability of those areas for development. And we all know that those type of distinctions can be debated quite vigorously because everybody has their own opinion to what a specific land use would be. Our job was to evaluate as carefully as possible with all the available information and recommend to the steering committee and planning commission where those lines and where those different densities should be in fact described. Now, the importance of this is that as a policy document, the planning commission could have individuals come before them and present a information that says, my property in fact should be zoned for a different density of land use. That's the nature of the process here is that private property owners always have the right to petition the planning commission for a change in zoning based upon whatever factors they think are correct for the property. And the planning commission's job, of course, is to use the plan as an advisory or guidance document in helping them make land use decisions for development throughout the county. So, the plan is advisory, the zoning is specific. But property owners always retain the right to come before the planning commission and seek a rezoning if they feel that the recommended zoning is, is not what they intend or want to have for the property.
So, is, so is safe to say that, that an isolated piece of property was not deemed so based on its isolation, but in the context of everything else? So, if I had a piece of property, that it wasn't based on its own merit or its own distinctiveness, but within the context of it all, it received the line drawn?
I think that's a fair way to characterize it. There are thousands of individual private pieces of property within Rutherford County and to evaluate each specific ownership on its innate values to support development is not a practical exercise and not one that the county commission asked the staff or the planning commission to do. We looked at the land use designations as a system, if you will, of development and made recommendations based upon a careful analysis of all the lands within the county, looking at the relevant criteria to evaluate and looking at land uses and doing so within a framework model as you suggested, rather than look at it every single ownership on a property-by-property basis. In some respects, that's the job of the planning commission, when a petitioner would come before the planning commission and seek a rezoning or a change of use based upon what they would seek for the property. It's a large county. There are many, many ownerships. We went through a very careful and systematic way of evaluating the suitability for land use and that's reflected in the plan that the planning commission adopted and in the draft zoning ordinance that the planning commission is considering now.
Oh, one question please. At, you said they would come back. At what point in time someone that's in the, the yellow, the most yellow, wanted to come back and, wanted R15 like we have it now? Okay. What point in time would they come forth to ask for that? Would it be now or would it be three years from now or what, what's, what's the timeframe on that?
I think that's a question that staff is probably best to answer.
Sorry. Mr. Lynch, I guess the, I guess there's a couple of different ways to, to answer that. If they're wanting changes to be made after the fact, I mean, they're, they're really, you know, let's just say for the sake of argument, this goes through, it's approved, it goes into effect. I mean, there's no waiting period after that, you know, that with, you know, no zoning changes within about 120 days. No, we're not going to approve any zoning changes or anything you can't ask. I mean, they could, the meeting after we, this is approved at the county commission, they could come in the next month and say, I want my property rezoned. There's nothing that says they couldn't do that. Now, if someone is wanting to, on the front end, do that, and this is kind of what we've been running into. We've run into that situation a few times with people looking at commercially zoned property. Someone has a piece of property and they say, well, you know, I'd like to get my property commercially zoned. This might be a good time to do it when we're doing all this other. We've really discouraged that practice at this point because, quite frankly, those minor, in, in this grand scheme of this whole map, you know, a, someone wants to come in and zone five acres to commercial, that can get lost pretty easily in this. We feel that they should wait until after we're under the new document, the new map to come in. So, that way they're going through the amendment process like anybody would have to go through as far as, you know, notices to, just our normal amendment process. So, we've been discouraging that kind of, of, of situation. Yours is, is a little bit different in regards to the fact that you're asking somebody who's got, if they're in the yellow area and they want to be in the orange area. Now, we have discussed, at least, I've had discussions with some folks, especially around the fringes of the, the line between the yellow and the orange. Like I said, the comprehensive plan, we, we based that line on what was approved with the comprehensive plan. Now, that line on the comp, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, that is not meant to be a parcel-specific map. So, you know, when you, especially when you get to the edges between the orange and the yellow, the three units and the one unit an acre, there's a little bit of what I would call fuzziness or wiggle room in that area. You know, some of those properties could probably go either way. It's one thing if some of the areas around the, the fringes of that, I know that line want to change. It's a whole nother thing if somebody out toward the end of the county where it's clearly all in the one unit an acre wants to do that. You know, at that point, I would just recommend they, they probably need to wait because, you know, the zoning changes, it's all be like any other zoning change. They need to prove to you, the commission, and also to the county commission that their property is more appropriately zoned, something different than it is today. So, I don't know if I've really specifically answered your question, you know, just directly, but it's, it, it just depends on the situation, I guess.
Okay. I'm thinking out 231 and there's utility water and there's Highway 231. The roads there, all infrastructure's there. I know there's some pieces of property were bought. This, this sort of hits at a bad time for some people that bought some property to develop and then the economy went south and then we're coming with this and they bought it with the R15 mindset. It, it, it meets, like I say, it's on the highway and it's, it, it has the utilities. And if, if, if they want to come back in a few, say, three or four, three or four years, if they want to come back, will the mindset of the planning commission, are we going to have some guidelines that they will be able to do that? Or are they going to be totally stuck with the one acre?
No, I, I think, I don't necessarily know if there's guidelines per se. You know, there, there won't be a checklist or anything that says you have to meet these things for the zoning to take place. But it's any property owner's right to ask for a change of zoning. I mean, again, that could happen the meeting after this is adopted, if, whenever, when this is ever adopted. They could come in right after that and start asking for amendments to that. But that's why we use the comprehensive plan. But those, the plan can change as well. And I've, I've maintained that throughout this process. You know, I think there's a misconception out there that someone believes that once their property is zoned, whatever it's going to be zoned, and let's just say it's this map, once it's zoned that way, that it's going to be that way for the next 20, 25 years. That is simply not the case. We understand that, you know, infrastructure will be in areas, it'll be extended to areas, areas that maybe not ripe for development at this point, maybe in two to three years, five, 10, you name the timeframe, will become more ripe for development. In those situations, then I think plan amendments are in order and I think zoning amendments are in order. And we will make those recommendations at the planning commission. If we feel that a rezoning makes sense, that there's adequate infrastructure there, that we feel it can be consistent with the plan or that the plan needs to be amended, I mean, staff will grant a favorable recommendation to that. Now, obviously, decision's not to us. It's up to you to make a recommendation to the county commission and then to make the final decision. But, you know, I don't expect this map, if this is what's adopted, I don't expect this map to look like this in five years, let alone 15 or 20.
Well, it's, it's proof positive when things were really booming around here, the developments weren't out in that area. I mean, I live out in that area and I know it's clay and it's rock and, and, and if we zoned it R2, whatever, it's just going to get so many. It's just, you, you can just do so much with what you have and, and, but, but I don't want people, they, they feel handicapped that they won't have the right or the ability to come back and change, especially on Highway 231. It's there now. I mean, I, why would they draw a little finger down that part of it is sort of questionable, but.
Right. No, that, that right exists today and will exist whenever this is adopted. I mean, that, that, that is not going away.
So, to Craig's question, if I understand you right, if somebody in Fosterville or Milton, which would be more outlying areas, if they wanted to request a rezoning, they could do that and they would not have to be contiguous to the darker, the orange part of the map then?
Yeah, there, there's not a, yeah, you don't have to be contiguous to that. Now, those examples that you brought up, you know, both Milton and Fosterville are in what we call development nodes, you know, those rural nodes. And I know you may not have attended that, but I, I think that lends credence to that kind of a situation. Because if they're within those nodes, then we recommend the, a, a different density for those anyway, so. And again, it would just have to, it would depend on the situation. It would depend on the, the, the status of the infrastructure of the property itself. You know, somebody just wants to get a, a three unit an acre zoning in that area because they feel they can get more houses out of it, but there's no water out there. Let's just, I mean, I'm just throwing out an example. There's no water, the roads aren't very good and those kind of things. You know, does it make sense to rezone that at that point? You know, my recommendation would probably be no, it doesn't. So, it just depends on the situation as it's brought up.
Oh, well, I want to ask to me what appears to be the obvious question then. If everybody in the light yellow area can request a rezoning, then why change it? You know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, just because they can request a rezoning doesn't mean it has to be granted. I, I, I mean, I see where you're going with that, but, you know, just because that, that right doesn't go away, but that does not automatically mean that we feel that all land should automatically be zoned for three units an acre.
I'm not a proponent of either. I'm just, I'm just trying to ask the obvious question.
Just said if they don't have water out there. Well, if it's owned R15, they don't have water, they're not going to get a development anyway. And the gentleman over here said that some of the criteria was the, the type of soil, the utilities, stuff like that. Well, that's going to have a lot to do with what's developed regardless of having zones, you know, and.
And that's true.
One problem I've got is there are literally like, you said, thousands of parcels of property out there and a whole lot of these people, even though we've had, how many public hearings are going to have even more and community meetings and all, don't have a clue this is going on. And, and if this were to pass, we're going to change their zoning from R15 to whatever, one acre per lot and they're not even going to know it. And then when, but when they get to where they want to do something and they want to rezone, they've got to come up here and give the county a bunch of money to apply for a rezoning. They've got to get letters sent to all their surrounding neighbors. They've got to have the public hearings and all to get it back to what they've got now. I mean, we haven't notified anybody officially on an individual basis, hey, your zoning is going to be changed. But to get it unchanged, it takes this, this, this and this and letters and everything else. I, I don't know. The, the more we get into this, the more I'm having second thoughts about. You know, Craig mentioned somebody that's bought a piece of property right before the things turned down and, and, and they're just waiting for the economy to come back to develop it and now we're going to cut their legs off from under them by taking their zoning away from them, you know, and I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think we need to figure out some way. I noticed in some of these, some of all the comments, there was something, maybe a letter I got or something that commented, every, every parcel property owner ought to be given notification, you know, a, a postcard or something, you know, so they would know for a fact, so we could see how many people actually are affected instead of the people. Because a lot of people don't read the paper and, and they just go about their lives and think things are how they are. And, and to go on and make a wholesale change, I'm, I'm starting to get a little more uncomfortable all the time with it myself.
Now, I'm going to make one more comment. As the planning commission rep on the steering committee, I'm, I'm not saying this is a bad plan or a good plan or either, but if we, if we leave the status quo, then I think we, the whole effort has been futile based on the comments of where the steering committee came from. Because there, there were, you know, definite rated things that we gave a score to and part of it was preserving or, you know, keeping some of what we have, some of what I moved here for, some of what I was born here with in there. And I, I don't know whether this accomplishes that or doesn't. But this, I, I, I think there was, at least on the steering committee and the comments we got, there was, there was some drive to do a little something different. And I, I, I'm not proposing either thing, but I think if we leave the status quo, we haven't done our job.
But just as has been said over here, you know, you can, in all three directions, you've all mentioned there, you know, we can all see those different ways and, and what we've got to look at. And that's why I guess they've given us this very easy job, I guess. You know, that's why we took this job. We, we saw the merits of it and, and this sort of thing, but I say that facetiously. But, but we, we do have to look at maybe the benefits from this. One thing that I don't think we've ever really discussed extremely a lot is the agricultural residential zoning. You see a few green spots on that map, but not a whole lot. But I drive every day out in my area by a lot of farms. And out here in this lighter yellow, there are still a lot of, a lot of farms out there that we just really haven't discussed that much about what are the benefits from having agricultural zoning. And since, I think in what, 1984, when the zoning was first discussed or when we had R15 developed, if anything, I heard more than anything from people is why didn't we put in agricultural zoning at that time? A lot of people wanted it at that time and it didn't happen. All we had was R15. And I've heard over the years as we discuss things about the encroachment of development onto farms, people said if we only had agricultural zoning, well, it wasn't there at that time. And now there's an opportunity for those who wish to continue to farm to have this zoning out there. But, you know, we don't have that. But I think, you know, if this goes through, I think you'll see more of those become requested. And the way I understand this is the way that you would get that zoning is that the individuals request for their farm property to receive that zoning. Because it's just hard to go out here and place that zoning on somebody just because the fact they have a farm or whatever, that they have to request that zoning and go that direction. Because you just really don't know exactly where it is, where it's all, whatever. But just as you've, you've mentioned there, Mike, a lot of time, a lot of effort went into a lot of people that's given this voluntarily. And, and I'm just speaking as an individual that's come on this committee after the group started the, the comprehensive plan. And, and I made one of those community meetings out here in Rock Vale. My wife and myself did. We went there not knowing a thing in the world about it. We just saw it in the newspaper that it was going to happen. We wanted to find out more about it. And that evening, I, I think you were there for that, that night and, and as they discussed it more and more, we left there, I guess, basically confused about what in the world was going on and how it was going to work. But then as they went about the planning and the people working on it and gave this time for those two and almost three years, you could say that there was a reason for it. And I think what we have to look at this is that we're not planning something for right now. We're planning something not for just us or for the people today, totally. We're planning something for Rutherford County in its future and for those generations. planning something for Rutherford County in its future and for those generations. I've got two granddaughters, one's three years old, one's one, and I'm hoping that they have the opportunity to see some of the Rutherford County that I've enjoyed for sixty-three years. But if we're not careful in what we're doing and how we're planning it, they won't get that opportunity as I did, or as well as others. And we're gonna have to be real careful as we're finalizing this, and I think it's been great, Mr. Chairman, that we've taken time with it, as well as given the individuals that we have in this county the opportunity to come forward with the public hearings we got. And I know we've discussed here tonight the date that we'd give it back to the county commission and when we do it and whatever, until we're satisfied with what we wanna give there, that date doesn't matter at all to me.
Let me reiterate one thing, and David or Michelle, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know exactly how it was worded, but the top two points that we, that the steering committee came away with were to Will and Craig's point, were private property rights, protection of private property rights, and then the preservation of some of what we had, and I don't remember how that point was worded, but those were the top two things, and I think whatever we do, it needs to shoot to accomplish those two goals, maybe amongst more, but those, to me, are, were the primary takeaways from being on the steering committee.
Doug, as far as the ag, agriculture use, uh, the property assessors' green belt stipulations that they already have, could this not be incorporated into this map to help, I guess, produce those that are actually on the green belt now? I, we're never, like he just said, we're not, we're never gonna have a, a perfect, you know, ordinance at all, or, I mean, we're just not. It's got to be a revolving or, or continuous change, and, and a lot of these folks are not gonna know this change until they come here with a change, whether it be this year, next year, ten years from now, and they go, what? I can't do this? Well, I, I thought I could do this, you know, and so, that's when it's gonna hit, is when they wanna do something. But I, I just thinking about this agriculture use here, I mean, uh, true, I think we can go in on what, what's already on the assessor's rolls right now is green belt, and that's our agriculture right now. There's gonna be some, I'm sure there's more than that, but, uh, uh, that would give us a good start with more green on there than what's showing on there right now.
I mean, the, the, the quick answer to your question, could we do that? Yes, I think we could do that fairly easily, actually. Now, just so everybody understands, the zoning does not affect the green belt status, you know, even if it's zoned for agricultural use, that's not gonna make any difference if, as opposed to being zoned for residential, either the R, the RM, which is the three units an acre, or the RL, it's, it, it, it really deals more with the size of the property and then if it's being used for agricultural purposes, which would still be allowed in the residential zones. So, I mean, the quick answer is yes, we could do that, uh, but again, it doesn't affect anything as far as their green belt status.
Well, like you said, I think some folks have looked at this, though, and, and you look at your points down through here and you see agriculture and you look, man, there's only, you know, handful of green spots out there, and you get in your car and start riding around, it's like, well, I thought, I thought that's a farm right there, that's a farm right there, and, and, uh, they're growing stuff over there, you know, so, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, and, and, and keep in mind, too, some of the discussions that we had, when we first had this zoning map, uh, brought to you for review, there was, uh, one property in particular that, uh, in the northern part of the county, it was over a thousand acres, that we had recommended to be zoned agricultural, just because of its sheer size, uh, and, you know, part of the reason, again, for the, the downzoning that we're looking at, it just allows the planning commission and the county commission to have a little more input into the development of the county. Right now, if you're three units an acre, doesn't matter where you are, you can come in with a plat, you meet the criteria, there you go, and there's not a whole lot, and that's been something that, you know, I know even some members on the planning commission have struggled with over the years. That was why we were looking at the one unit an acre, and, and even the, the one unit per five acres with the, uh, with the agricultural zone. The agricultural zone, we've, we've tried to make that more of a voluntary, you know, if somebody wants it, and, and what you see on the map tonight is more than what we started with, you know, we've had a few people that said, yes, I wanna be on that, so that's why we've added them in. But, and, you know, I, Will, Mr. Jordan, I understand your concerns, you know, I know we've discussed this, uh, you know, this has been something that I know it's, it's been kind of on everyone's mind since we started, really, with this whole process, but I do think that with the zoning a little less dense in those areas, it does give the planning commission a little more input into the development. If somebody thinks a, an area can develop more of a three unit an acre type density, then they have to be able to come in and prove it to you and prove it to the county commission. Right now, that's not really the case, the zoning is there, as long as they meet their criteria, the subdivision regulations, that's, you know, that, that's pretty much the involvement we have, which was the big reason, I, I think, that a lot of the comments we heard was, uh, looking at the downzoning, so, I just throw that out there for...
Doug, what would be the advantage to someone coming in wanting his farm zoned agricultural? What, what, what's advantage to him?
Well, of course, any of, most of the agricultural activities that are identified in our zoning are already ma- already permitted by right, one of the biggest of those being agritourism type businesses, you know, we see a lot of corn mazes, pumpkin patches, uh, farm, those kind of events, especially in the fall and those kind of things, uh, those would be permitted by right in that zone, that would, that would keep them from having to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals every year to get their conditional use, what we call now our special exception, every year to do their corn maze or their, you know, you, you name the activity, uh, you know, uh, or any, any other type farming type activity like that, or any other type of agritourism type activity, we would allow those by right, that's really the biggest advantage, we feel.
Yeah, okay, if he's doing agritourism, he's doing the corn mazes and all that, but if he's just farming his property, i- i- it doesn't give him any more rights to develop more houses, to develop more or less than, than the one acre, is that correct?
The agricultural zone does not, no.
Doesn't, it doesn't prohibit you from coming back and requesting a change from that agricultural zone in the future, either?
No, it doesn't, uh, it's like any, a- a- any property on this map, someone can come in and ask for a zoning change, that's the same today and it'll be the same tomorrow.
At that point in time, it gets political, though, because if it's thirty years from now and there's subdivisions all the way around you, and all the people are using your property for their green space, for their view shed, one of our phrases up here, and, oh, we've got five hundred people packing this courtroom saying, we don't want that development on that pretty green pasture I've been looking at for the last twenty years, then it's pretty unlikely it's gonna get zoned back for a development, in my opinion, you know, where it, you know, where it's a, a use by right now.
Well, and, you know, and, and I understand where you're, where you're coming from on that, I do, but I think that's why it's so important that we come up with the comprehensive plan that we came up with, that gives the planning commission, it gives the county commission the guidance on making these changes. You know, if the comprehensive plan says, you know, infrastructure's in place, uh, or, you know, it provided infrastructure's in place and all these things are, are taken care of, roads, it's got adequate schools, it's got this and that and the other, then that gives planning commission and the county commission the tools they need to look at that and say, well, we understand you've been looking at this for the last fifty years and you really like it, however, you know, based on the plans that we have and the zoning tools that we have, we feel this is consistent with all of that and we would recommend approval. Or if it doesn't, then you recommend denial, that way you're actually using the tools that you have to base your decisions on as opposed to just popular opinion.
I'm mainly, mainly commenting on agricultural zone there, I would hope we would keep that as a voluntary thing and not, you know, force somebody in it, you know.
That's been our, at this point, that's been our, our practice.
Well, and it's always been my experience, too, since we've been on, since I've been on the commission, that I just feel like this group, and I imagine future groups, will always, as much as possible, try to protect the property owner's rights, you know, if they, if a property owner comes to us with what is a reasonable development, you know, using his land in a constructive and, and good way for the county, I think we bend over backwards to try to help them do that, and I don't, I don't see that changing going forward, um, and I guess that's part of the reason that I'm not as concerned about changing or doing the downzoning, because I know the mindset of this body, and what our experience has been, what I feel like it will be moving forward. You know, and I can't help but think about, you know, it, it's been twenty-five plus years ago that we implemented this zoning, and we're still the only county in the state who's done it this way. You know, it's one thing to say that you're a leader, you're a trendsetter, the reality is, if you, if you're leading and nobody's following, you're just going for a walk. And so, I feel like that's what we've done here, and so, it's just, and we've, we've seen too many developments that have come before us, that as a body, we didn't feel good about, and we didn't have any, any way that we could look at them and really examine them to the degree that we wanted to, and so, I feel like this just gives us one added layer of scrutiny that we don't have, it doesn't, um, it doesn't make us all powerful, it doesn't, you know, um, it, we're not gonna be able to, to go in and really dictate to folks, you know, everything exactly that they can and can't do, because again, we are for the property owner. Um, so anyway, this doesn't make me nervous, these changes don't make me nervous, as, and, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I remember about when we talked about the map, it, it was not intended to be parcel specific, however, when we go through, part of the limitation of the mapping software is that as you go through and attempt to do shading, it grabs an entire parcel, is that right?
Talking about the comprehensive plan?
This plan.
Well, thi- this, this is the zoning map, this, this is parcel specific, yeah, that, I mean, the zoning map has to be. Now, the comprehensive plan map, the, the future land use map that we base this on, you're correct, that, that was just the way the model worked.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, just as a follow-up to something you said earlier, like, for example, I'm looking down Jefferson Pike, and you've got the little purple shaded area, and let's go east of that, to the, to the north side of Jefferson Pike, you've got the lower density, to the southern part, you've got the little bit higher density. Let's say I own both part, both sides of that, and I wanna, I wanna do a development, because you were describing the fringe development, if I wanted to develop with equal density on both of those, there, there can be a case made that says I should be allowed to do that if all the other variables are in place.
I, I believe you're correct, and it's probably difficult to see on that map, but on the, the computer screen here, I can see it a little easier, there's actually a couple existing subdivisions in that little area on Jefferson Pike there on the north side that actually are already orange, because they're existing subdivisions.
Right, but you can see that little pocket there where it's not, and so...
Right, yeah, and what I'm saying is even in that little pocket of yellow, there's a couple small slivers of orange in there that you probably can't tell on the map, but I can see a little better on this. But to answer your question, I, I believe you're correct, if it's right on that fringe and all things being equal, uh, I think a case can be made for consistency with the comprehensive plan at that point, yes. Mr. Chairman, there's no other questions, uh, I guess we'll just, we did pass out the proposed timeline on the zoning ordinance update, based on the comments we received today and then the, the, well, this from the discussion we had at the planning commission and the report that we made, if you would like, you know, I think we can go ahead and, and make plans to have our second public hearing at the April ninth meeting, if everybody's okay with that.
Timeline, commissioners that we talked about last, at our last meeting, um, and it could be changed, once again, depending on what we receive at our public hearing, this tentatively scheduled for the ninth.
Yes.
Oh, if, if that, after that, public input, if we want to go back and do more work on it, then we would, uh, change that timeline considerably.
Right, yeah, this is a, and I'm glad you pointed out, this is tentative at this point, I think, I think we're at a good spot now where we could go ahead and, and, and go ahead and, we'll schedule the, of course, we're gonna have a meeting anyway, but we can go ahead and schedule the public hearing for April the ninth, uh, go ahead and have our second public hearing, and, of course, we did recommend some future dates after that, but a lot of it, like you said, just depends on what comes out of our next public hearing, so...
That meeting require thirty days notice?
No, not before the planning commission, it doesn't.
Before the board of commissioners.
Right, we'll still do our advertisement like we normally do, and I'm sure I see...
Like, and that's about twenty-eight days from a day, so...
Right, yeah, and I see Mr. Broden in the audience, and I'm sure he'll do a nice article for us, uh, you know, explaining, you know, what we've discussed tonight, and that the next public hearing, provided that you're all okay with that, would be April the ninth.
Whatever process that we do end up with will be, uh, will be something that won't be rushed. Actually, we've, I think the timeline, the original timeline, when this whole process started, uh, was nowhere near as long as we have been into this process, so, uh, nothing can be accomplished by, uh, rushing or trying to speed this process up right now, uh, so, um, without objections, we'll have a public hearing at our next six o'clock meeting, which will be ninth of April, right here in this room, um, and then, uh, we will try to finalize some things, uh, after that, and it depends on where we feel like we need to go and how much more additional work needs to be done. Um, but one of the discussions that we had was, let's get something into the county commission's hands as far in advance of their public, uh, notice, public hearing and notice of that public hearing, so that they can take a look at it and be receiving questions, and, uh, they can answer those questions when we, uh, share information with them. Uh, it's gonna be equally important that they be, uh, up to date on this process, uh, and, and not feel like they're blindsided on this process, so, uh, if we don't get through it this spring or summer, we're, the, the, the world will not come to an end, we're still, uh, okay.
And I will, I will say that, you know, regardless of what comes out, and, and most of the discussion, as I see it, really going forward is gonna be about the lines we see on this map, whether we keep it RL versus RM, or if we just make the whole thing three units an acre, like we currently have it, regardless of which direction that goes, of course, you know staff's position on that, but regardless of which direction the map goes, the documents that we will get out of this, we still think will be a much more workable document than what we're currently under when it all, when it's all said and done, so I just wanna just kind of keep that in everybody's mind, you know, really, what the biggest things that we're really discussing at this point are lines on the map, you know, the, the document itself, we feel is pretty sound, so...
At our, at our next meeting, is the agenda heavy on the next meeting?
We don't have any, yeah, we don't have any applications presently, but there may be two different zoning cases that may be coming in, but they, the Friday's the deadline for that, so at this point...
Do we have some more things here we may be possibly looking at also? You'll probably get some more...
I'm sorry, that was...
You'll probably get some more information, some more emails tonight, tomorrow.
As far as the public comments go, you know, we have that website that, uh, you know, on the county's website, we have that comment form that can be filled out, we haven't received a comment in that in several weeks. Uh, you know, I don't anticipate just a flood of, if we do, we'll address them, of course, but at this point, um, you know, I think the issues that are near and dear to people's hearts have been presented to us, and I think we've addressed those to the best of our ability. So, I mean, not that, it's not to say we won't get any, but we haven't received a, a comment on that for quite a while now. I have, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Forgot to mention the, uh, code department report, should've done that, you have it in front of you, um, and, uh, I guess that's, brings us to the, um, end of our meeting. Any additional comments? It's been an informative meeting, I appreciate you guys coming, uh, and we'll also, um, expect you back, uh, over the next few months, too, as we kind of go through this process, yes.
I'll offer you a comment or two. Uh, what you're going through here is, is, is extremely difficult, and it's extremely sensitive, always has been, always will be, when you're dealing with these kind of issues and when you're dealing with people's property, that, uh, but you're putting something in place that, that is lasting, and that, uh, hopefully at least, we'll build a community that is, uh, is worth preserving and worth living in. Uh, there's a lot of, to be said, there's a lot of things have been said about property rights, and we all own property of one sort or another, I guess. One thing to keep in mind, I think, from the planning commissioner's perspective, is that the zoning ordinance is a tool for balancing property rights, because what I do on my property affects my next door neighbor, same thing all around, and whether it's, um, commercial or residential or whatever, uh, the effect is there and, and extends far beyond just the property line, and so the only way to balance that is through this kind of a process, and it's always difficult, so I admire you for doing it, and I know you're well paid for it.
Mr. Terry's comments, there are no rights without responsibility, so that's probably, probably some of what we're trying to address here. Do we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth, a regular morning meeting?
Yes, we will have a regular morning meeting at that time, yes, sir.
I, I would just like to comment that we were somewhat criticized for discussing this in the past during the day meeting, because the night meeting could be much heav- more heavily attended by interested people. There are four people in the audience, and one of them is a city staff member and one is a newspaper. is a newspaper reporter who are already here, so I don't know where our crowd is, I was expecting a full courthouse tonight, because we did make sure, promised not to do this at night, so people could attend, I don't guess anybody would have showed up if it had been a day meeting, but we only have four people in attendance, so I will say I'm a little disappointed by that.
As with anything, this process, um, when you get this many folks together, it, it's, it's not going to be, everyone's going to see eye to eye, but our goal is to come up with a process that we can live with going forward into the future. And it needs to be a document, I think that we've talked about several times, that is a living document, and it's not carved in stone or written in blood, and it can be changed, uh, and that, to me, is the protection, I think, that the citizens of the county, whether it's the northern or the southern end of the county, or anywhere in between, uh, will, will, will really want. And I think, uh, Mr. Reed, Commissioner Reed, um, mentioned, uh, the agricultural end of it, and how many discussions have we had over the last 10, 12 years about agricultural and, and ag use, and I think those types of things, if, the voluntary things, uh, are the type of things that I like to see, um, just as a citizen, like to see. So it's been a, a, an educational discussion tonight, um, and with nothing else, I think, Commissioner Vaughn has to get home and do some feeding, so, uh, he's probably going to have to do that in the dark, even though we've got daylight savings time on our side now, so, uh, and, and nothing else, um, we're adjourned, thank you.